Good evening, I'll call the August 8 Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order and it's at 6:47. We have a little technical difficulty, but we've got power ramp on. So if you'll rise with me for the
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll call the secretary select. Yes, trustee Bowser here, trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager here, vice president Shaffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here.
Thank you, and we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. And that brings us to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Second, support discussion. Having none, vice president Shaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the agenda is adopted as presented. And that brings us to gratitudes, and we would open up the floor for sharing at this time. I'm gonna start. There was great energy in the new staff orientation this morning by the planners and the participants. That was very nervous and appreciating. Great job. I'll say I drove around campus today because I was early and it just, there's a lot going on. And it, I mean, it looks good. It looks really, really good and an awesome camp red hawk. I just think that's really cool that we have back this year, so that's nice. Well, I think I've said this maybe the last two meetings, but I really do just appreciate all of the hard work, particularly of the administration throughout the summer when no one's around. But you guys just are working around the clock and just making sure things are ready to go for the school year. And now that we're just days away, it's very much appreciated. Still weeks.
Less than a Christmas break away. And we all know how fast those. Yeah, I too am just grateful for the incredible efforts by the members of this scene to pull a program together. Well, first to fill the room with new staff, thank you Dan, but then to pull a program together that's meaningful for those individuals as they watch their careers of red hawks is outstanding. And even the red hawk was here with us this morning, which was, which was fun. But then, more importantly, just the efforts that are taking place in our buildings by our teachers, the fluidity and flexibility that's being demonstrated by our principals and our administrative support staff and our, again, our teachers and our support staff interventionists. And people are really just recognizing things aren't normal, taking a deep breath. They're not, they're maintaining patience, a level of patience when we run into hiccups. And I think that's what we really have to embrace as we move forward to keep our sanity. Students will be here in two weeks, so we'll be ready.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our set items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support and vice president Shaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, and set items are approved as presented. That brings us to a closed session pursuant to opening this meeting at section 8B for student discipline. I would entertain a motion to move into closed session at this time.
So moved.
Support and discussion, having none, vice president Shaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, we will move into closed session at 6:52 and we're gonna go downstairs to
Room 205, so we'll go out this door, we'll go down the stairwell, and then the classroom will be right around the corner to the right.
None of this weed stuff.
Okay, it's 7:08 and we'll roll back into open session. And we have a little housekeeping issue. We need to, I need a motion to open the agenda to add the student discipline onto action.
So moved.
And discussion. Having none, vice president Shaffner.
Yes, just a clarification, that'll be actually number C.
Correct.
Number letter, number C. Yes.
Okay, secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. All right, yeah, puts us at discussion, and we're opening up tonight with athletic eligibility proposal with Mr. Matt Muffett.
All right. Thank you all for your time today, and obviously it's from stemming from a conversation we had this past early spring. And I just want to thank you for the time again, but I did sit down with the committee. This was the committee that we sat down with. We had students Molly Bentley and Ryan West were there. We had a couple of parents and then some coaches, then obviously my secretary was involved in this committee as well. The schools that were polled were all the all okay gold schools. So the other seven schools were polled, we polled their athletic handbooks, I got them. And then all boarding school districts were also handbooks were given to us. I went through before the meeting, just highlighted what the academic eligibility was for the weekly eligibility along with their semester eligibility. And then what I did was I handed out one or two schools to each committee member, and then they presented on what that was to everybody. And I actually didn't really do a whole lot of talking, I wasn't the one involved in talking about it. So what we found was weekly eligibility, failing one class and you were ineligible. So obviously that is what our current eligibility is right now. So there were, there were four schools that that is their eligibility if you fail one class. There were three schools that if you failed two classes, then that was the weekly eligibility, so that's the MHSA poll. And then obviously there was a couple other people, there was five schools that had failing two classes, but they only checked them every two or three weeks. And then there was a couple, three schools that only checked them once per the marking period, and they had the same MHSA eligibility was if you failed two or more classes, then you were, then you were done for that week. And obviously as soon as you got it back up, they were now checked, they were not checked again for another nine weeks, which I think would do students a disservice, but I'm not working in one of those districts. Obviously, like I said, we were one of the hardest ones. Kent City and Thornter catalog were the two other schools that have the same policy that we currently have. And the biggest thing was the majority of the schools don't check their grades on a weekly basis. The semester eligibility, Kent City was the hardest. They have, if you fail one class, or sorry, failing no classes, so one, if you don't fail any class at all, then you're eligible. There was two schools, us and Thornter catalog, that if you failed one class, you could fail one class and still be eligible. You couldn't fail two, and the other ones, you could still fail two classes, but the MHSA eligibility of 66% was every other school that we polled. Kind of just what I just said, obviously all the other schools use the MHSA standard for their semester policy. This is coming from the committee, and something I talked to you guys briefly about in the springtime. This was mentioned by the student athletes first, is we mentioned about having Ds count towards their eligibility, because right now when we do the checks, we only pull for Fs. So all of a sudden, a kid could have three or four Ds, and all of a sudden, the next week when we check it, they could have two Fs and be ineligible, and then coaches and then student athletes didn't even know about it. Obviously, student athletes should if they're checking their power score and being grades, but parents wouldn't know about it either. So the student athletes like that, if we pulled their grades earlier, they would be notified a little bit earlier that having an F, but they'd be notified when they have a D when I talk to them. But also the coaches, coach Arndt and coach Lowing love the fact that they would see their kids' grades when they do have a D, because then they get, many of our, many of our coaches provide tutoring after school. I know that our football program does it, our girls soccer program does it, I believe our volleyball program does it. For those kids that are on the eligibility list, they go to tutoring right after school until they have practice. And so I think, like I said, I think it's just a better check for our kids. It puts our, our kids in a better position to be successful for checking them with Ds versus checking them with Fs. The other recommendation, recommendation that they liked is, this came kind of more from our coaches and our parents, is that, you know, we check them differently during the season. So for example, our fall sports started today, we don't start school for two and a half weeks. So it's one of those things is all of a sudden, then if we check it three weeks from then, it's five weeks into their season, a lot of our sports teams, for example, golf and tennis would be 50% over their season before we even check the first time. So we would start checking those three to four weeks from the start of each season now, which would just be a standard versus be saying, oh, the winner, you know, we're gonna start right now, right away, right from the tryout date, we're gonna start and give those kids an F right, right away. It wouldn't be fair to those winter athletes, and that's what the committee came up with. They also said that obviously as soon as those kids get the okay to play, that they're eligible, then they would be able to return to sports. Right now, they sit out the full week regardless of if they get their grades up or not. What we saw in the other handbooks was a lot of them wore the same, same wording, was that as soon as they get their grades up, they are now eligible to compete. I think it helps our kids work a little bit harder and actually to get those grades up, so that they hopefully stay up as well. This was one of the last recommendations, there was a couple of schools that had this as well, where students with IEPs and also students taking AP classes would be offered a review of their grades. So if they have, if they are ineligible, or obviously we probably do it as soon as they are on their report card with a D, okay, on that check with a D, we would review their grades, okay, by this teacher of the class, myself, I believe it was a coach, and then obviously the school counselor as well. And with the four of us, we decide, hey, is this student working to their full potential and giving us their best effort? Their just best effort is a D, or is that person not giving us good effort? You know, some of our kids that have been in AP classes before, from what I've heard, hey, they're giving their best effort, their best effort, you know, they got bad grade on test and it's an F. Currently, our teachers do have the opportunity to waive that and write, write off and check off, say, yes, they are good. But this would obviously make sure that that happens, because right now, if a student goes to teacher, some students don't feel comfortable going to that teacher and asking them to sign off on their, on their paper. This would just make sure that the teachers meet with myself, the counselor, and the coach and just talk about it. Then the coach is involved with that conversation as well with the teacher and saying, hey, what's going on? Is this kid actually doing, doing their best, or hey, this is what they need to do, they have missed assignments, and this is the reason for their poor grades. So that was something that some of the other schools had on their handbooks, and our committee liked that as well. And then the only other change they wanted to see was the semester eligibility, was just to use the MHSA standard of passing four of six classes to be eligible for the next semester. Their reasoning on this was, was it gives them a fresh start at the end of, at the end of the semester. So instead of having, having to sit out just because they, they did very poorly and have that, you know, that one F, or more than one F, what we currently have, they would get a fresh start. I think it would help benefit our kids for one, being a part of an athletic team, but also making them work hard for that next semester, whether it be fall semester, if their spring grades weren't great, or obviously the, the spring semester for that, for the fall and winter. That was the only other committee recommendation. So like I said, the big overall change would be the weekly eligibility would be checked, starting with Ds. And obviously two Ds would equal an F, because like I said before, our student athletes, we have six Ds currently right now. Our student athletes have six Ds to be eligible to participate. The Ds obviously would then, hey, you have two Ds equals an F, so if they had four Ds, they would be eligible. If they had two Ds and one F, they would be eligible, or if they had their two Fs, they would be eligible. The committee chose this piece just because it still is harder than every other school besides TK and Kent City. So it's still the third toughest one out of, out of the schools polled because of the fact that we're gonna start looking for Ds as well. So it's not like, I think it's gonna help our student athletes and our coaches be notified earlier with those Ds, but it also is gonna be harder than those other schools as well. Any questions?
I'm wondering about the meetings with the teachers to figure out, how often do you see that happening? And how long do you see those meetings take? I just, I hesitate to add one more thing to the teachers' list of things to do. And if we're looking at doing that every two weeks for possibly more than one student in their class, how do you envision that?
Off the top of my head, last year, I think there was one AP student that we would have met with in the fall, none in the spring. And for the IEPs, there probably would have been four or five students that we would have met with. Just so you know, I would most likely try to work on their prep. I don't want to add something extra that, or right after school. So it wouldn't be something I'd ask them to stay around, stick around for. I have a pretty good relationship with the majority of the teachers and obviously the coaches. So like I said, I want to make this as easy assignment as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
I just got a comment, I just, I really do like the preventative approach with looking at the Ds rather than the Fs. I mean, that just makes a lot of sense. Just to step in and offer, making sure they're getting the support before it gets to that point of an F. You know, you know, allows them to hopefully perform sports that way too.
Yes, yeah, and I should add that, I mean, I, I was the one that brought up the F, the Ds, just because the, the students were the one that brought it up, they're like, you know, because both of our students were very high achieving students, so obviously it was one of those things where I don't think they, either one of them ever been eligible. But their point of view was like, for our classmates, it might help them if they're, if they're, if they get help earlier, then just all of a sudden, oh, you have an F, now, hey, you're eligible, now you can't play. And obviously, most of our kids do get their grades up to play, but if some kids get caught by a D, it might help our kids, you know, maintain the C average too.
Any of the other districts around here have the, the D?
My, my former district was, was, once we polled in Edgewood Dust. I made that change as well, just for the same, the same atmosphere as our coaches. That came from our coaches and our kids as well, is when I mentioned to them about the Ds, they, they have it and they, they love. And, and the biggest thing now is, you know, before, I'm tracking on an Excel spreadsheet, hey, this kid got an F the second week of, of class in second hour, and I gotta track it if he gets another F or he or she gets another F in week 13, they're now eligible. Which is 11 weeks apart, and it's really crazy to me. But they like it at Wayland just because it's very easy, it's strict. If you have two Ds equal an F, so if you have four Ds, one F and two Ds, two Fs, you're ineligible. There's no questions you have to ask or anything like that, it's, it's very simple, the parents understand it. And so that'd be the only other school that has it, so we would be tied for third with the strongest one, yeah, sorry.
You've done some of these things elsewhere, you said that. I'm concerned about, and I don't want to not let athletes be athletes because of our administrative responsibilities, but I'm concerned about the time it takes to pull Ds and look for Fs and do it three weeks into the season, and check every two weeks, and then once a semester, there's a lot going on here. So kind of talk me through how, is it, do you do that? Do your times do that? To me, it's kind of my.
Very good question. So right, currently right now, Ms. Hillier pulls all kid, every kid that has an F that's on a fall athletic team, she'll pull that grade on a Wednesday. She will print out progress reports for all those kids, she will hand progress reports to all those kids. Those students can go to their teachers and get it signed off and say, yes, they've been working hard, this F does not count, or this person is good to play, they turn in a bunch of assignments, their grade is now a C minus, whatever it is. They must turn those back in to me on Friday. On Friday, Dana pulls it again, Ms. Hillier pulls it again, and we check it, and I let all coaches know on Friday, just giving you a heads up, we are gonna pull them again on Monday morning. So we give kids three, basically three times, and obviously if a kid, say a kid doesn't have an F on Wednesday, and they have an F on Friday, we don't count that. So we give them a boundary for the doubt of whatever's best for them. Then we pull it again on Monday, and then I say, these kids are eligible on Monday through Sunday this week. So, and obviously, like I said, the time consuming part for, for me is, is checking it. The first time we pull eligibility, I got, this kid has an F in, in second hour, this person has two Fs in third hour and sixth hour. Oh, they, they didn't have anything that week, oh, they were good that week, and the next week they have another F in second hour. Oh, hey, you're ineligible because you have an F in fourth hour. Right now, it is very time consuming. What would look like, so we pull it three, three or four weeks in the season, whatever I decide. I would like to go three, just the earlier the better, right? And obviously the fall sports is gonna be just the first, first week of school when we pull it, right? We pull it on that Wednesday, we give the coaches, hey, here's the list of kids who are currently have Ds, here's, here's your kids, here's their grades, these are the kids that are, would be ineligible if they don't get it up by Monday. Then we will give, we will, on Monday, we'll pull it again, so it'll be one less poll for us now, and then we would check it every other week, would be the biggest thing now with this, with the current. So going forward, the recommendations from the committee, it would be way more manageable, and it's way more easier, and I think parents, student athletes, and teachers and obviously coaches, well, if you guys are coaches, I guarantee 60% of them don't even know what our eligibility policy is. Now it's literally strict, I mean, it would be easy, hey, four Ds, one F, two Ds, two Fs, you're eligible that next week. Or two weeks if you don't get it up in time. So it would be easier with this one, but to answer your question, this past year was, it was.
So this simplifies what you're.
Very, very much so, yes, sir.
If you're ineligible, let's talk about the football season. Last week in football season, if you're ineligible during that week, you go practice that week?
It's, it's up to each, each individual coach there, so you don't play in the actual contest that you have.
You may or may not practice based on the coaches.
Yes, there are some, there are some coaches that have student athletes during practice time, get out their, get out their Chromebooks and help them out or do some work with them. There are some coaches that let them practice, but obviously there's not a lot, gonna be allowed to play. It just differs, and obviously that's, that's one thing I probably wouldn't want to micromanage that for each coach.
So, so we finished football season, we're rolling basketball season.
Yep.
Players ineligible that week, we're gonna check again in three weeks, so the player can practice and prepare for the next season. And then three weeks into it, whether we've had our first game or not, we don't know. I don't know how quickly basketball works, but they may or may not be eligible to play in that first game or that first weekend.
Yes, and, and most of our coaches did a great job last year, like before tryouts, our winter, our strength coaches asking us to pull reports for those, for those kids, and they asked those, they talked to those kids about it during tryouts.
So there, as soon as they get it fixed, they're eligible to play, there's not a mandatory, so.
That, that was what the committee suggested, I think it's just, yeah, just from what they saw in some of the other handbooks. Before, like I said, it was, don't matter if you got it up, and obviously I feel the phone calls. I feel the phone calls about that last, last year, oh, my, my, my son's grades now are passing, and you can see it, here's a screenshot of it. Unfortunately, the teacher did not sign off on it, and it wasn't up on Monday, and, and they do miss two events from it sometimes, so yeah.
How many students are, will be affected by this, if you're asked that?
I personally think this will help our student athletes, I truly do.
50% of the ones that can't, currently, I shouldn't say currently.
Yeah.
On average, 50% of the players who were ineligible, become eligible?
I would say there was probably 12 to 15 kids that were ineligible on a weekly basis last year. And I would say it would probably help out probably half of those kids. I'd say there, there's gonna be five or six that are on it, but I think getting, catching it earlier with those Ds, I think it's gonna help our student athletes. And obviously, I saw the success that I had, had, had Waylanded, and obviously, I mean, I could get some data from them as well, I'm sure it's still. Do you have a problem?
Any other questions? Moving on for action, probably next season. For two weeks, so if you have other questions, they come to the next, the next.
Shoot, shoot me emails if you have any more questions or anything, reach out to me, not a problem answering anything. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving to the special item B, Mr. Matt Muffett retains the floor with the high school handbook provisions.
I do not have a PowerPoint presentation for this one. Mr. Johns has been the lead on this, but the biggest change, I think that you guys can see, is from our students and our staff recommendations. The thought of allowing hats, not hoodies, hoodies will still not be able to be worn, but to allow hats during passing time, but also at lunch, but also to give teachers the freedom to say if they would like those in their classroom or if they would not like those in their classroom. That's the biggest change on there. I'm gonna grab my phone and give you some other common points as well. The other big things are, is close campus, campus has been close since COVID, so it's one of those things where we're gonna keep that in there. And obviously, there was just no change that ever took place in the handbook over the past couple of years. That was the big thing, and then the other thing was, is just the pronoun highlights are not seen, but not necessarily a change. And then also like just some grammatical things that he went through and, and made some changes as well. Like I said, the largest piece is that, you know, just the, able to wear hats during the passing time, during the lunchroom, before school, after school, but also each teacher would be able to say, hey, we're not, I'm not gonna allow hats in my classroom. Some teachers may allow them, some teachers might. I, I do know that, obviously, we talked about this being the first reading. I know Mr. Cataldo has talked to us about, hey, this is, has a, will have an impact on 612, too, when he would like to be a part of the conversation. So it's one of those things with questions, I think, we still need to be as a group of 612. I think there was so much change that took place in the springtime that we weren't able to be as a group of 612, and I think we'd like to get on pace with that. That's just coming from talking with Mr. Cataldo a little bit today, so do you guys have any questions on that?
I noticed too that you do not have the red line.
Right.
So I'll make sure you get that.
Yeah, because I'm looking at dress code and headgear, including hats, boots, and caps are not allowed.
So, yeah.
So what led to the exploring of whether or not hats would be allowed, like what motivated the change in discussion?
It's been a talking point with our students and staff members. And so obviously, I know that Mr. Simmons has asked our BMT group about many different issues, or what they see as some of the issues with, with school, and what they would like to see changed, and multiple people from our BMT meeting brought the possibility of bringing hats back. I know it's been a topic for our students, a lot of our students at KCTC wear their hats, and that's the population that, to be honest, we probably had the most problem with last year, was that group is able to wear them at KCTC and then they come here, and, and they just don't take off their hats. And it's probably just, they don't think of it, and obviously then all of a sudden, they could, usually, like, I was always really good with, hey, just take your hat off, you know, but I know Mr. Guppy does get some referrals on it because kids wear them throughout the course of the day, and then you get referrals. And then obviously, that kind of those referrals added up, and all of a sudden, it's your sixth one and becomes insubordination. You know, then we're, we're sending the kid out for in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension for wearing a hat. You know, it does it do a disservice to that student. So I think that's kind of where we brought up, it's mainly students, but our staff members have, was one of the things that they brought up during their BMT, just questions that. Uh, but our staff members have, was one of the things that they brought up during their BMT, just questions that, that Todd asked about, hey, what are some of the hot topics? And multiple BMT members brought that up. Mr. Barrels here has been a topic in the past, I guess.
There's been a discussion over time, but some of it's safety.
Yeah. Yeah.
No testing times. But a teacher could say, no, we're gonna test today.
So if you have it both ways, aren't you still gonna get those referrals? And, and if you say hats, then you have hats. If you say no hats, then, and if it's like teacher, if it is teacher choice, then aren't you still gonna get the referrals to Mr. Guppy?
Um, I think, obviously, that's in each classroom. So you're gonna have, yeah, I think you're very valid point is, student walks out of a classroom that says, the teacher says you can wear a hat, and all of a sudden, they're in the hallway, they're wearing a hat, and they just forget to take it off for the next classroom, and it's a teacher that has, no, I, I, you were probably, I'm sure.
That would be my. I was trying, I was like, well, the safety concern is, are we allowing backpacks in classrooms? We thought about, I just, safety wise, I don't have to get a box for things like that, but.
Using their lockers, because every kid sits real often.
It's just. Right.
Are we, is this being presented as the handbook for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the one that starts in two weeks?
Well, that, that with the, and that's what Mr. Cataldo brought up as well, is like, it's, it's hard to make some, it would be hard for you guys to make a change right now with, we've already done the middle school handbook. But I think just with the new, new principle, new system principle, and obviously, myself being new last year, I mean, it was one of those things where it, it took a while.
None of these recommendations are critical.
No.
We can move forward.
Yep, sure.
We can adapt modifications mid-year.
You're comfortable doing that?
No pressure.
Alright.
So.
I just know, one, make a big amount, big announcement, middle year, you can wear hats starting next Wednesday. You know, or no backpacks in classrooms starting next month.
It's, those are tough things to do in middle year.
It's easier to become more flexible than it is to become more restrictive. But both, you know, both situations, you can make it happen.
Okay.
Students are very adaptable. They just need to know that we have clear expectations.
So, I'm just gonna go there. Some teachers might have been having to wear masks last year. Is that gonna be on the table?
Yeah.
For choice, for a teacher choice?
For teacher choice for the.
A student's wear mask.
For a mask.
I mean, or maybe, or you didn't know about it. Maybe it was, maybe it was a rule. Okay, well.
Yeah.
We'll talk it up to a rule.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, I don't think the ISD's under it, or our health department's under any, at least I don't.
No, no, no. It was just, if, if, what if, well, there is no mandate or anything, right? I just wanna be sure that. Okay.
People have the choice to.
Yeah, they can.
They can if they want to, but it's not, a teacher doesn't need to say, in my class, you're gonna wear a mask.
No.
Outside of anything big.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I remember that either.
So, but there you go.
Yeah.
It's all you.
She was starting.
That was a good question. The teacher could choose to wear hats.
Yes, but not he or she.
But, yes.
But not maintain the entire.
It's only a, a, a student, and a student should choose to. Agreed. But a teacher doesn't choose for a student. That was. So we're looking forward to the red line, and then the, the discussion will continue, knowing that we don't have a deadline.
Yep.
But we have things under consideration.
Any other, any other questions when you guys can get that red line one, just, just shoot them over to me, Mr. Johns or Mr. Simmons, and we'll get back to you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along with discussion item C, financial report with Matt Sullivan.
All right, just a couple of quick notes on the fiscal year end, thirty, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we are currently still in the process of closing the books, getting ready for the upcoming audit. Our auditors will be doing the final fieldwork the, the Tuesday after Labor Day, so I believe it's September sixth. Then we, they will be out to do their financial statement audit, as well as the federal compliance audits. Federal compliance audit will consist largely of testing of various S R expenditures that we've incurred for the past twelve months. So when you look at the year-to-date budget update, the, the budget to actual still is not quite lining up with the final budget that we presented back in June. Because we have not officially closed the books and posted all of those jurisdictions. So uh, the bond budget, I can pull that up real quick for you, uh, just to know. Through July thirty-first, we have expended, uh, just over fifteen point six million dollars of our Series One construction bond. We have another three point four million dollar pending that will be paid out this month for the July, uh, pay application that Triangle submits to us on a monthly basis. So that was a, that's a pretty significant, uh, outflow of cash that will be occurring this month. But as you've noted, driving around the district, there's a lot of work going on, and it's, a lot is getting close to wrapping up. So expect that August to be a large pay application as well.
We hope.
And then just one thing I wanted to highlight. I, I spoke to Kami last Thursday as I was preparing it. As of now, enrollment for the upcoming school year is looking very promising. We have a total enroll, actual enrollments of two hundred and ninety-nine, so a hundred and eighty-five kindergarten enrollments. And then about another hun, just over a hundred of enrollments for ECSC first through twelfth grade. So, uh, a lot of that is school choice, families coming in, but we're also seeing a large uptick of families that hold their kids for one year to homeschool. They're starting to come back and re-enroll. So, uh, as of now, it's looking very promising. You know, twenty-seven of our young thighs will be rolling into the kindergarten class. Um, and then we have, uh, currently have forty-eight pending enrollments. So if those all, it all plays out, we're, right now, have three hundred and seventy-four new enrollees in the district. Now, one thing that we don't know currently is how many students are moving out of the district. Um, we don't typically, typically find that out until once school starts, and, you know, we see that they're not in class. Secretaries will start calling home. Hey, is Johnny, is Suzie, are they, are they planning on attending? Have they moved out of district? So that's one thing we don't know. But right now, for our actual enrollment numbers, uh, is, is looking promising for us. Uh, and I think Kami says she's probably enrolling, um, probably ten students a day right now. She's, she's making the call, making sure everybody that is pre-enrolled is, just following up with them, trying to make sure that everybody is aware of the upcoming start of school. And then we'll also see an uptick as Jerry sends out bus routes. Somebody called, I'm not on bus route. Where's my boss? I'll be having enrolled, so. So it's looking promising. So, any, any questions from under the documents that I posted? Keep it short and sweet to them.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's a pleasure.
All right, moving on to discussion item D, the bond construction update with Russell and Scott. Russell is still standing.
Yeah.
While you're sitting, Russell here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's been busy, and we'll get busier before we, before we slow down. So I think the big updates, um, we August eleventh was our, our inspection day on Pencil. For high school and Cedar View, our final inspections are on the fifteenth. They'll follow the triangles. There's just inspectors who are, are in schedule, that we're not responding. And actually, our project manager, the triangle, is kind of pickled about it, making sure that that's responses. Um, so those inspections happen on the fifteenth. And then Red Hawk, they've been telling me the last couple of times, it's in danger of falling behind. If they push that final inspection back to the eighteenth, so both building and fire inspections will happen on the eighteenth. Um, all that said, we were able to work with the inspectors, uh, to allow staff back in those buildings in pre-final inspection. As long as they are setting up their rooms and actively preparing for the school year, the, it's starting Wednesday. And the sixth grade part of Red Hawk and Cedar View and high school staff will start setting up their rooms. Um, so that's, that's a push forward. That's, that's a good step. Uh, the pre-K side of Red Hawk is still not, it's still a hard hat to sew. So I'm not able to give the, those staff members a date yet when they can enter, not be right up against the wire. So we're kind of playing it day by day. Those are the, that's a big update on the schedule. High school, just gonna give you a bunch of details. I think on all three projects, we're down to the finishes, removing furniture and paints mostly up, carpets mostly now. Uh, mechanicals, fire mostly done. We, we switch over to the fire panel at the high school on Friday. So we're at that stage of all the projects, except for Red Hawk, where we're still, we'll have, we'll still block filling up, painter's right behind the block, carpet for paint. Yep, block, carpet is right behind the paint, furniture is right behind the carpet. That's the way Red Hawk's gonna go for the next couple of weeks. And, um, and then we're all, crews are all working really hard. We're all really hopefully with this time allowance. Um, only other big update I had for you today was, uh, we talked last time about the sanitary and storm, uh, problems of Red Hawk. So we did actually end up, uh, we're doing, fixing those problems proactively. And, uh, we did have some significant contingency spend at Red Hawk. Uh, so on the construction contingency, we spent an additional hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that contingency on that project. On that, fixing all the plumbing, all those sanitary install. And then on the other side, we spent, um, a hundred and fourteen thousand and some out of our a hundred and fifty thousand dollar in that contingency. That's the biggest hit we've had to our contingencies under this project so far. Um, but, uh, one of those things you couldn't see when we started the project, but we did happen, and, uh, we'll have to tackle it. Uh, we're still in the black on those contingencies. We still have over three hundred thousand dollars left in our construction contingency at Red Hawk. And thirty-five thousand, five hundred some left on order contingency. Um, don't see anything left that we're gonna need to spend that on. But we still have some money there. Odds and ends, uh, oh, beach, I should mention beach, we had a very good design, uh, meeting on the twenty-seventh with building staff, administration, uh, and G and B. Uh, we, big takeaways there. We focused a lot about where the front of the building would be, so we realized sense, the front of the building is main entrance. We wanted one entrance for student staff. And then is really the hub of the building. We want that to be close to all of the parts of the building. Um, so we didn't want to design a building where the main office entry was down here, and there's a lot of warlord and entered out. So getting that in a limited footprint is tricky on that site, and we have the, the wetland waterways on the backside. And we have existing buildings. So we're exploring the idea of removing some of the classrooms off one of the wings of beach and give us a little bit larger footprint to work with. Uh, I think we can, we can do that, and we'll use classes strategically. So, um, we're taking a pause on that design work this month, but next time we meet, G and B will come back with some concepts based on the work that we did in that meeting. And talk through feasibility of removing four, six or so classrooms off one wing, and see what our options are up there. Give us a little bit more room to work with. Track, last coat goes on tomorrow, and then we'll stripe it. Weather pending is probably a day after, and then, um, looks like the rain's gonna hold on. And then, it was said earlier this meeting, but huge thanks, I wish I had, I'm still remembered, and very flexible, all the building principals, teachers, coaches, bands. Everyone who's impacted by all this work, it's been fantastic. And, um, yeah. And they're gonna keep being fantastic for two more weeks. I know it, so. It's gonna be a big push, and, um, yeah, I appreciate everyone's, and those.
Joe Russell's points about, um, the inspectors, we're not the only district who is in, you know, embracing construction right now. We were, uh, included on an email from Scott Jernberg, one of the vice presidents from Triangle, uh, to the, uh, state of Michigan, uh, enlisting multiple projects in multiple districts, including ours, uh, where they're just not getting, uh, an appropriate degree of response, if any response. And so, uh, hopefully, there's, there's some benefit to being, uh, connected with other districts as well um, versus being out there on the island by ourselves. So it's, we'll see where we go. But those inspections are quick. You know, we can't occupy the buildings until we have authorization to do so from state.
We will. We will.
So they're on the calendar. Regarding inspections, they were the eleventh. Was that a date that you had estimated? That was a date they scheduled for you.
That was an estimated date at the very beginning of the scheduling process for all the projects.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because we got, so there's multiple inspections through the process. This was the final inspection.
Gotcha.
So we were all on target for the final inspection. And like Scott was saying, they got called in, and there's no response, no response, no response. So, um, so that's where Scott Jernberg really went to bat on our behalf and other districts. Got us on the calendar for the fifteenth, wasn't the eleventh, but fifteenth. And then we asked for the eighteenth at Red Hawk to be later than the others. We, we just needed the extra time.
So speaking of Red Hawk, and I, I don't know your background, and I apologize, I'm not trying to question you, but at, at what point and who hits the, hits the panic button if we get somewhere where we're not good?
Um, we're not real happy. Yeah, no one's panicking, so the.
Glad to hear that.
The greatest we have with Red Hawk, there's a few things with Red Hawk. So we have, um, the, the classrooms that are torn up and not ready to occupy today. They, they still will be by the beginning of school year, our, our early. They, they still will be by the beginning of school year, our, our early childhood classrooms, um, that don't start day one of, of, uh, school. So our sixth grade classrooms are mostly untouched through this first phase of work. And, um, we, we set furniture, cleaned, um, all the one or two of those are, are ready for school now. Okay, we just need the, uh, and, and the office is all ready, we just need the final inspections for occupancy. Um, and, and those systems are going to be fine. So the, the work at Red Hawk that's going to be up against the wire for like just, you know, last minute kind of stuff are rooms that we don't even need.
Got you. Good. Glad to hear that.
Thank you, man, if horses be with you. Hey, discussion item E is book review process update with Jen Haberl.
Absolutely, so, um, over the course of the last year, it's really remarkable to think about the progress we've made regarding this body of work. From work at the national state and local levels collaborating with a variety of people. Um, we now have some processes in place that are in alignment with board policy. Uh, that will help us to know how we make sure that the right materials are in front of our students. And how we partner with families to make sure that they feel comfortable with those materials. So, um, what you have in front of you is first, uh, the long form of all of the information that was gathered collaboratively, um, especially across Kent County and, uh, with the help of some of our friends at state level. Um, to come up with, uh, what are we, what do we believe, what are we going to do, how will we behave here in Cedar Springs? And it is personalized to our, um, especially our literacy classes. Uh, and it is honoring of the work of our professional teachers and it is honoring of the, um, preferences of individual families who have students in those classes. So I have to say, I'm very proud of that work that our teachers have done and that we've been able to do together. Um, we'd like to move this from draft form to final form, knowing that there's always the chance we'll go back and revise as need arises. What will be most helpful to you is really looking at the second two links, so the book approval process for teachers. And, um, just to give you an update, in the spring, I did meet with our secondary teachers to say to them, here it is, this is what we would be doing. This is how we would be operating together. Um, share with me, you know, what you'll need next. Uh, so that selection process varies depending on whether it is a whole class book, a read aloud book, something from a book club or a book list, or a completely wide open choice or classroom library reading. And I think that, um, suits exactly what we would need in order to say, you know, if something is a whole class book, it will get approved by this board of education through the right process of vetting. If something is a read aloud, it would be shared at a department level to determine that that's the right read aloud to do at the secondary level. We don't have too many full class, all book read alouts at the secondary level. That might be something we'd see more at a lower secondary level, maybe sixth grade, but there aren't any currently that I'm aware of. Um, what clubs or reading lists? Uh, we have a few that I am working through that process with our department where they vet through the materials using a rigorous, um, process. They present that to their peers for discussion and discourse and they keep that on file with me. So that if any concerns come about, we know about those. And then choice reading, of course, we want to work with individuals to choose what's going to work best for them and what they're interested in reading about and what suits the purposes of, um, the instruction that's happening. So that's really the big process in advance to be proactive before we start reading anything. The second piece that you, um, are fairly familiar with is the piece about what happens if a concern is raised. And following the processes that we have in place in our board policy, we would really hope that that begins with a conversation with a teacher. So if a parent or a student has a concern about something, that's the first place to begin is with that teacher to say, oh gosh, this maybe doesn't feel so good to us or it doesn't meet our family's expectations. And then the teacher and that parent or student work together to find a suitable alternative that will meet that family's needs. Just the same way that parents have the responsibility of thinking about what movies are we watching, what video games do we play, what television shows are permissible in our house. Um, so that's where that begins. And if that can be worked out, teacher and parent, that's the best kind of partnership we could expect is that those collaborations are happening right there at the point of where our service is happening, where teachers are teaching. If that doesn't seem to work out and a situation is raised to a higher, um, level, then we would hope that the parent would go to the principal next. Uh, and that that principal would let me know so that we can communicate with the family what their options are for next steps. Um, of course, we want each parent to be able to choose for his or her own children what are best choices. And, uh, we want to help with that to be really transparent about these are the purposes for what we're using these materials for. Here are some choices that might be suitable and if these don't work, we'd like to help you find something else. So that you can still participate in what we're doing in class and show mastery of the standards. That's really where that, um, that goes next is a process like we went through, um, last winter uh, with books that were concerning to parents and parents were saying, we don't know that these are good for any students. So we went through that process, invited parents into that conversation, um, and, uh, used a, a pretty thorough process to determine, um, based on board policy, these still suit the needs. If those families don't want those books, they're certainly not required to read them and will find a suitable alternative for them. So that's really where that process, um, landed. If the committee were to decide that a book really doesn't fit where it is, for example, if it were being read in seventh grade and it was really more appropriate for 10th grade, that would be something that we would bring forward in the recommendation to the board of education so they can be aware of that as well. So I'm curious what questions you might have about that process or anything you see that we should be mindful of.
I think, well, just the one thing I know even um, last winter when we discussed it, was just making sure what is sent to parents, thank you. You know, that that is required.
Yes.
Um, and not just suggested.
Yes, suggested.
Absolutely. So, um, actually I already sent an email to all secondary English teachers and administrators saying we're moving this from draft into final form. Don't forget, you have some obligations as a teacher. One of them is clear, transparent, upfront communication with families to let them know what their choices are. Um, that can be found on page 18 and there's a sample there. Uh, so I work with our high school principals and our middle level principals so that we have a process in place to help support teachers to do that. We've also talked about the fact that, um, if something has not gone through the vetting process, we're not going to put it out there as a choice. But we do need some time to put this into play. So if a list had twenty books on it, for example, it would take a bit of time to get that vetting done and through the PLC or the department in order for it to be on record with me. Um, you know, we'll need to give our teachers a reasonable timeline to get that work done, but the communication piece is something that we're definitely planning to start this fall.
So how will we know when that happens?
So our high school principals and I talked about that today, actually, and some follow-up that will happen in terms of collecting that information.
And I did notice that parents, the word parents was mentioned forty-four times. So, um, thank you for that, that spoke to me that we are, we are, we are voice.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's important that we include them, we're collaborators together, so it's absolutely important.
Just a question, I know, like if a teacher says select a book off of this list, is that considered a whole book class or is that considered a reading list?
That would be considered a reading list. Yep, because a whole, a whole class book would be all of us together are reading this one single book, a book list. And we really, um, talked with teachers quite a bit about using not, we must live from this list, but here's some suggestions. Here's the reason we're using these books, this is the purpose we're trying to get at, our educational purpose and standards that we're trying to meet. Or any other book that meets that purpose. So be completely transparent to say, here's what we're using it for and the goals we hope to accomplish. These are some that could meet that, but you may know of another one that will be suitable for your family. Um, and your family's values and morals. So it's totally fine for students to pick something different in a situation like that.
I just, I had a question, excited, I really did like the appendix three, the teacher book vetting guide. Was there something like this that was done before?
No.
No, okay, I didn't think so, I, but no, I really liked it, I think it's, I think it'll really help clarify the whole process and be preventative.
Yeah, yeah, so actually Tracy, we used that when the concerns were raised this time, I asked the teachers to please complete that now. Knowing that they had forethought about what is it I'm using these books for, I wanted that in writing as a part of the process. Um, to make it better, I think having that before there's a concern makes it even more authentic. Yeah. It makes, uh, you know, it really helps a teacher to be clear about this book is the best book that could be representative of what I'm trying to do and I thought through that.
And I think that's the point that Jen made earlier where it will take us a little bit of time or some, in some cases, it may take teachers a little bit of time to go through that vetting process with each of the, uh, materials that are currently being used. But in the meantime, if there are concerns raised, there are opportunities for families to bring those to the forefront and identify a different option. When they have a list and they say this is what we're trying to meet and the, the family chooses a separate book, is there a plan in place or has it been talked about if that chosen book by the family does not in fact meet those, what, what the teacher was trying to?
Yep, that's why that collaboration is so important between family and teacher. Um, in some cases, as an example, in the cases of some of the books that were raised over the course of the last year, the goal was really to reach toward more AP level reading and, um, things that had won some large awards and had particular voices represented. Um, so, you know, those things, when you articulate them, it does move the list down to a smaller set. But it would be important for the family and the teacher to work together to identify, does this meet the level of rigor that we're hoping to move our students toward? And we heard from students a bit, you know, over the course of the last year about the importance of reading things that might stretch them and help them imagine different ways of living than we do or they do. So, um, I think that collaboration is really important and helping both parent and teacher to see, we're in this together. We're all pulling in the same direction for the benefit of the student, let's do it together.
Thanks for being able to understand the why.
Absolutely.
So, so as we think about, and I appreciate that, I mean, we certainly don't want to stretch it to our students, but as we think about, you know, making sure that we're limiting any kind of exposure that we might have to new challenges, are we starting that work in areas that there had already been kind of contests raised?
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, last year we heard quite a bit about one particular list and we will be working on that right away.
Thank you.
Good thoughts?
I would just comment, I'm not an academic person, but I read through everything you've done. And I really appreciate the time that you and your group have taken to assure that our students have an opportunity to, uh, make a choice, whether you're going to read something that is, uh, appropriate to your family or not, get to make a choice and decide what it is. I think it's great work.
Thank you. Thank you. One more thing about this, um, through the course of the work, you will notice, especially in that long form, the one that is, I don't know, thirty-some pages long, that there are many board policies referenced. Through the course of this work, one of the things that I noticed that we should probably work into some of our work as a board and with district office, there are some board policies that clash with one another. So for example, one of the things that, um, one of the policies says that when a concern is raised about a controversial issue, it will be uh, resolved within five days and the board will be there within five days. That would have been impossible with three books at an AP level, even to get the books in five days and get them distributed to a committee of parents and teachers and administrators would have been nearly impossible. So that's something that we should definitely revisit, um, in terms of what makes the most sense. Um, you know, I hope we don't have a situation where three books are being considered at one time. But, you know, there, there is that possibility, so considering how we write that language would be important. In addition, there is some language in two different board policies, um, one that, uh, talks about, um, teachers being allowed to share their opinion, but another one that says teachers are not allowed to share their opinion. So those two are in direct contrast to one another and I think it would just be important for us to shore that up and decide what we want those to say.
So maybe one has an updated one too.
Correct.
Except, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for noticing that.
Yep.
You have a list of those policies? Okay.
Um, and I thought it was going to be in here, but, uh, we can put it in the next time so that it's part of our update. Um, twenty-two forty. Twenty-five twenty-one. Ninety-one thirty. Those were the ones that I noticed that maybe had some work we should just look at the wording to make sure that they align with one another and align with what we actually want them to say.
I know the, the timing of some things is driven by, uh, state, if I remember correctly, so we want to be careful on some of those and I can never research them yet, but.
Yeah.
Um, be mindful of that as we go through and take a look at it. And then, yeah, that's good to know that some are potentially conflicting.
I'll make sure that I get that, um, you know, policy reference dropped into board book under this, under this section.
Yeah, we want to begin with every classroom. I mean, that's optimal, I mean, yes, we want to look at the policies of, but we want parents to be reading, looking at the books their children are reading, reading their, for more of what they're writing, so to be involved.
With them about that, yep, absolutely, we want that participation.
Good.
Um, yeah, thank you for pushing us in this regard and helping us to think about it. It was, to say an enormous undertaking is an understatement. Um, but the number of people who've been involved and given feedback is remarkable and really exciting that teachers can feel supported and parents can feel supported and we can meet those goals all in one way.
And it's not just our district that's benefiting, you know, Jen's been a, a point person and leader throughout Kent County and it's had a positive influence in Ottawa and Muskegon counties as well. So the work that really kind of got its origins here, um, is having a positive influence on, fashion across the, the region.
Thank you.
Again, we, and we'll move on to special item F, Dean Transportation Contract Renewal with Manis Oliver.
Alright, so after, uh, we spent the summer in conversation with, uh, Dean Transportation Vice President Brian Thrasher as well, as well as Jared Gavin here, um, for our local operations. And I think we've, um, kind of narrowed down to the right number of routes and right size of the fleet for the district currently. Um, our contract that expired at June thirtieth, twenty, two thousand twenty-two, the per diem rate was based off of twenty-nine daily routes. Um, so that meant we had twenty-nine regular route buses plus, uh, seven spares for a total of thirty-six, a fleet of thirty-six buses about to the district. Um, that included a two-point-seven percent, two-point-seven-five percent annual increase that per diem annually. Where we landed for the renewed, renewed contract would be twenty-seven routes. Um, so twenty-seven regular buses plus eight spares. So twenty-seven regular buses plus eight spares, uh, bringing the total fleet down to thirty-five. And we're actually currently with the reduction enrollment, they have slimmed down the fleet a little bit to thirty-four. So we're actually adding one from where we currently are, but plus minus one from the, uh, two thousand seventeen school year. They propose a two-point-nine percent annual increase on that per diem rate. Primary reflecting the CIP. And Jerry has also been advocating that we break the ECSC transportation to the local operations. Currently Cedar utilizes the Kent ISD, uh, sped transportation to, uh, transport our ECSC students. Jerry feels that we can provide better service to both the ECSC families as well as our, uh, uh, sped students by reducing the amount of time they spend on, uh, the bus each day, um, and it will also save the district some money. So those are some of the factors that went into, uh, arriving at those numbers, the per diem rate. There's a number of assumptions that need uses to calculate that daily rate for each route. So number of routes, uh, the, the number of buses and spares that they have to carry. And the more routes that you have, the, um, more that those fixed costs are spread out. So you get a better accounting scale if you have twenty-nine routes versus twenty-seven. So part of that, uh, year one increase is primarily related to going down from twenty-nine to twenty-seven. So if you look at the, uh, account, going from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, there is a pretty significant five percent increase. But as part of that two-point-nine percent increase plus, um, scaling down from twenty-nine to twenty-seven. If there are any significant changes to our enrollment, um, we can reach out to Dean and try to renegotiate a, a different per diem rate based on the number of routes. And, and that works both ways. So for the past five years, our per diem rate has been based off twenty-nine routes, but, um, as we lost enrollment, as enrollment was declining, Jerry cut back on the number of routes. So we were actually, we're at twenty-five routes at the end of the last school year, but they were still charging us a per diem rate based on twenty-nine. Um, so it does go both ways. They didn't, did not, I believe, ever approach us to renegotiate that rate. They just honored it. So there is a, a little bit of protection built into the contract that if all two hundred and forty students return that we, that were down, um, we could reach out to them and say, hey, can we look at, you know, we need twenty-nine routes now. Can we look at adjusting that per diem rate to spread those costs out of twenty-nine? They did add a clause related to extended closures. So they have, um, regular school closures for, uh, snow days, incremental weather, um, that's at the current forty percent discount. For extended closures, they would, are offering a forty-five percent discount as long as the district provides enough warning for them to make, uh, enough notice for them to make, um, adjustments for their staffing as needed. And those were the, uh, major things that were major assumptions that go into it. You know, this year was kind of hard not being down, not knowing what ridership was going to look like. We absolutely lost students due to COVID and then riders, lost riders due to COVID because of the mask mandate on the buses. So we are starting to have a lot of those kids come back. As I mentioned earlier, enrolling, and even those students that who did not ride the bus are starting to ride the bus again. So I feel comfortable with the twenty-seven routes. I think it's with combination of being able to provide good service to our families, keeping those ridership lengths down to less than an hour. And being cost, uh, cost conscious at the same time. So my recommendation would be to, uh, move forward with approving the renewal asked proposed by Dean Transportation.
Quick question. The extended period where we get the forty-five, forty-five percent, is there, you know, I'm thinking back to when we had, uh, snow, was it funny? Is that, would that be considered, you know, a week long?
The extended was pending over ten days.
Over ten days. Okay. I wonder if.
It's, it's, it's. Really late, so.
Okay. Like so closures and mine.
Did the twenty-seven or what your number was include this specialized add back in or how did that work?
So that this, this.
If we're taking it back.
So it won't be creating an additional routes, but so the per diem is for four hours daily. And then there's a variable rate that is added on anytime a route exceeds four hours, there's a bear rate of thirty-seven oh seven per hour. So the ECSC would be not adding another route, but we'd be utilizing that bus for a greater amount of time in that day. So we're paying per diem and then they might add an hour or two hours at a lower variable rate.
And so those bus, those buses were coming from?
Previously, they were coming from Kent ISD.
So now they'll be stationed from here. So they're closer to our kids.
Correct. And it will reduce the amount of time that
Okay.
the ISD buses are transporting our students throughout Region One program. So those, those kids will benefit from shorter ride times as well.
What's the normal number of, uh, I'm, I'm just interested in the fact that there's twenty-seven routes, eight spare vehicles for buses. What's the normal ratio for that? Is it normally close to that percentage?
Yeah, I, I think we did add the one. So one of those spares is a, a lift bus, um, and then also a, one, a smaller bus for heads, not head start, but, um, you know, when you don't need the full seventy-seven passenger vehicles. So two of those spares, one is the, uh, the left, the other one's the, a smaller passing bus.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Um, and then also they need additional buses on hand for field trips and athletic trips.
Sure.
In addition to just the regular.
Yes, not just for, for great. It's okay.
Thank you.
The only thing I've seen, uh, I'm not concerned about, just make sure that we're all paying attention. Throughout the entire term of the contract, we're assuming the number of routes does not change. So we're saying our enrollment basically remains flat. Is that a fair assessment of what was negotiated or is this something we're going to look at next year and say, oh, we have twenty-nine routes and then two years it's thirty-two routes and that, and we're going to go back each year and, 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 you know, renegotiate what's happened.
Yeah, the, the twenty-seven, I, I, I did ask them for numbers for twenty-six, um, routes. And that per diem rate jumps up.
Goes up, right.
Went up, uh, ten dollars.
Sure.
Per day. I, I feel like the twenty-seven is, is a good number. So twenty-nine, we had twenty-nine, um, and then we've lost two hundred and forty students. Brought it down to twenty-five, um, at the end of this school year. Um, right now, based on the numbers, enrollments that we have, we might be up eighty-nine. This, you know, that three seventy-four was new enrollees, but subtract out our two hundred and eighty-five, four hundred and ninety graduates. We're right around ninety plus ninety. So I feel like that two seventy, uh, twenty-seven is the right number. Enrollment right now is kind of the wild card.
It is hard to track.
I, I just want to, you know, I, I, you give us total numbers of dollars increased for each year over the next five years. And I don't know, but I don't think you're going to be accurate because we're, we're, our enrollment's going to increase. But that's what we're, we built new buildings, we have a millage, we're, uh, it, so I'm not questioning the contract. I understand that's what it's going to be, but I want to make sure that we go back and get that per diem down every chance we get or
Yeah.
as often as, as reasonable. I don't know what that number is. So I guess, again, it's not, I'm not questioning you guys. All of us should be paying attention to that. And our rolling goes up and our busing goes up, we have an opportunity to raise the, or to decrease the per bus cost at the front.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, you go back to the, ho- hopefully enrollment does continue to go up.
Sure.
But if you look at the line bird rates, the county will be going down, but hopefully people want to move north of the city. Um, and Super Springs is a good location.
And the practice is a place that if it is the case that we do need more routes in the future, we have a positive relationship, uh, over time with Dean Transportation and confident that we will be able to work things out in such a way that we'll be able to support the needs of our families, students. If enrollment increases or enrollment reverses, so.
Yeah, I can say working with Jerry, he is very mindful of trying to, uh, be, uh, financially sound and probably setting routes. Jerry is a one-time Cedar employee. Loves districts. He's mindful of the costs that districts are.
And again, I, I want, I'm sure I'm not being critical, but, you know, let's, let's make sure we're, we're paying close attention to what's going on there. It's a very expensive part of, of what we do, bus, bus students. There's no doubt about it. So make sure we maximize our savings or minimize our costs.
And that's an expensive allocation that's going to continue to increase because of fuel personnel costs.
Oh yeah, another, another driver of that increase would be to pass the buses.
Sure.
Equipment, fuel and snack.
Yeah.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Mike. For a little more policy fun with Neola updates.
And I know you meant that authentically.
I did.
There was no second half in your voice. This is really a simple, um, uh, recommendation for revision. There are thirteen policies that are currently in our active board policy handbook. That includes Matt Blood's name listed as our Director of Human and Community Services and includes his email as contact information is one of two individuals that people could reach out to regarding harassment or Title Nine, um, uh, concerns. Uh, April Stevens is the other person, uh, that individual that's listed in our, our policy handbook. And so the, what I'm asking, uh, for the board to consider is approving us changing Matt Blood, uh, as being named as the Director of Human Community Services with Matt Blood's contact information over to Dan Scoville, the Director of Human Services and, uh, Dan's contact information uh, in the thirteen, uh, policy articles that are listed. I can read through those, uh, individually if, if I would serve the board. I can use different accents. Back in my jaw like I was this morning. If you'd like to film yourself doing that later and send it to us, that's fine. So it's just very straightforward.
So it's basically how.
Just a name change.
Yeah. And then it's on for action tonight. Alrighty. Any questions or questions I know? Okay, good. So moving on, that ends our discussion items and brings us to public comment. And this is the time where you can address the board if you have any concerns and we'll listen for the three minutes and Mr. Smith will power up. And might we have anything for this board?
Yeah, um, we have a request to make a public comment from Michelle Duffy.
Okay. Michelle knows the words.
There, I don't know. Well, I'm concerned about the, uh, book review. Uh, policy for one thing I'm wondering, why is it almost just parents of the kids that are in the class and not previous parents? Like Mr. Miller has said several times, I'm concerned that he would love to be part of that and yet he cannot be. Uh, is there a reason that it's only specific people chosen to do that? So there's a higher outcome. Um, what about people like we, community members? Community members, they pay taxes and don't they have a right to say, yeah, we want this stuff in the community? No, we don't want this stuff in the community. Um, what about me as an employee? I work here and if I was sitting in the break room where there's a teacher and he's looking at pornography or reading pornography, how am I supposed to feel around that? How am I supposed to feel around that when I know that boys are in this class and they're reading books that are given to them by a teacher that has explicit sexual striptease stamps? And I, you guys have the authority to say, no, that's not acceptable. We, we can be better than that. If there can be an alternative chosen, why isn't there an alternative chosen? He had a book to a student that has every third word is an F word or an S word or, don't talk this way, but here, read this. You guys can do something about it. Making a policy leaving at somebody else's hands is, you guys can do more than that. And I'm asking that you do. And most nights are I have so many people say to me, you know, like, oh, that's not right. That's not good. We shouldn't have this. But yeah, we do. We have to dance around all these different policies instead of saying, no, let's do better than that. I, I, I think that I'm asking you guys to do better than that.
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any other public comments? Anyone else for public comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Ian Frank. I work with Accapulco Advisors. We're talking about providers for your district. So just wanted to stop in, meet some people and show my face around. I just started working.
Thanks for joining us. With that, we'll pause public comment and we'll move to our action items for this evening. And first actual item is Dean Transportation Contract Renewal. And I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shocker.
Yes.
Secretary Snyder.
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore.
Yes.
Justy Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justy Revard.
Yes.
Justy Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, motion carries. The second action item in, uh, action item B is Neola Policy Updates. And I would entertain a motion for as presented and that is reflecting the name change.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shocker.
Yes.
Secretary Snyder.
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore.
Yes.
Justy Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justy Revard.
Yes.
Justy Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, motion carries. And our last action item is the student discipline, um, for the full session. And I would entertain a motion in favor of reinstatement that was as presented.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion?
Yeah. I would like to, uh, and I don't know if we can do this, but, but to reinstate a student, I would like to assure that we hear from the student in the future. And I don't know if, again, if we can, uh, assure that that will happen or, or we cannot, but I would like to look for something or find out if there's a way we can assure we hear from the student.
That's a great point, Jen. It's definitely something that we could include, uh, build into our, uh, reinstatement process.
Yes.
Right now, the reinstatement process just consists of, uh, a form that families would fill out, but we could definitely include that the student voice will need to be a part of that presentation or that body of work, uh, for the board to consider in making such an important decision.
That's my portion of the discussion.
Point well taken. Any other thoughts? Off of the vote, Vice President Shocker.
Yes.
Secretary Snyder.
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore.
Yes.
Justy Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justy Revard.
Yes.
Justy Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, motion. President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to the communication portion of the meeting. And for the Board of Education, you're up to date with any correspondence that I have? And you know of the pending, um, training that's available, should we choose partake from M A S P, we have that. So that's mine. To you, Mr. Smith.
Um, so you've heard from the bulk of the directors here tonight. Director Berenwald is here for future success. If we have anything that you would wanna share? And then Dan Scoville, uh, Director of Human Service, if you have anything that you would like to share with the board? I know it's an impromptu, uh, switch you on the spot.
I'll just share that, uh, we have nine students already lined up for their experience experiences for this fall. Which is the retro bowl we had last year. So we're making great progress and, uh, also had, uh, business impact that they heard of mission in their first student.
That's very cool. I ran, had a, uh, article from District out in Washington who is actually, um, working to provide students with credit, um, elective credits for working, uh, in, in the community, part-time jobs. Uh, and so that's, there, there are some different ways to approach the work. We just have to do it in such a way that it would count in the eyes of the Department of Education. Which is neat ways to reengage and to really put students out there so that they can make some connections. And similarly, support the needs of our business community at the same time.
Yes.
I would just echo what Heidi said earlier. It was very exciting this morning to see some of the fruits of not just my labor, but many people's labor, um, coming together in the room today, uh, for new teacher orientation. It's always exciting at having an opportunity to interview and select candidates for a building in my past practice, but never for an entire district. And to see, um, multiple buildings represented, that was very exciting for me and Jen. She doesn't like taking credit, but she did a fabulous job in prepping, not just today, but the whole week. And I'd love to take credit for it, but I didn't do it. So she deserves all the credit.
All right. Okay, that brings us to the end of our next meeting. Um, need anybody?
Twenty-second.
Is that good? All right.
Yeah.
August twenty-second and also will still be standing at August twenty-second. Oh, I'm sorry, you were gonna talk about.
Yeah, I just added in for clarification. You know, there's been that dance of do we graduate before Memorial Day or after Memorial Day? And sometimes it's been fluid, uh, based on the, the timing of the week. One of the questions that we had, um, that we really looked at was, you know, at what point in time will students have completed all of their AP testing? And, uh, based at least on initial examination of that, key question, um, between Mr. Berenwald and, and Miss Hapling and myself, we determined that it, we really could move forward with, uh, consistent protocol where we, we graduate the Thursday before Memorial Day weekend. The benefit to that is that, you know, the day, the, the, the following Friday, that is a day off, at least according to the current calendar. Any staff members who would participate, uh, in the senior enrollment party, uh, celebration could go to that event and then have the, the following day to recuperate uh, versus having to, uh, take a personal day or a case sick day, uh, on that day after. And subs are difficult to find as well. So, you know, we talked about perhaps, um, you know, allowing students, seniors to be done in, uh, mid to late February. Because we thought that that would be life-giving for all parties involved. Uh, but we realized that we wouldn't be able to accomplish all of the academic requirements to complete their senior year. And so that Thursday prior to Memorial Day would be a, a good balance for us moving forward. So twenty-twenty-three, uh, we will be graduating on June first. Uh, but then in following years, it will be Thursday before Memorial Day as, as a, as a path.
This one helps. Yeah. Okay, so with that, it's eight-thirty-seven and we'll stay in turn. Thank you.